Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. And that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We have just one item. It is approving the list of select priority items for the state legislative agenda for 2016, and I will move that item.
Councilwoman Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items today for approval. The first item is the civil rights boards and commissions appointments. Second item is a detox services contract with Timpin County. The third item is bomb disposal unit grant award. And the fourth item is a bomb service services contract amendment with Minnesota Timberwolves. And Madam President, I'd like to move the second, third, and fourth item. And I'd like to pull the first item just for a short discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Yang has moved items two, three, and four on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone have any discussion on any of that? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Councilmember Yang on item one.
Thank you, Madam President. This was, I don't know how to call it, but it might have been an error on our parts with regards to the civil rights boards and commissions appointments. And, you know, I have an amendment in front of me, and I'd like to move the amendment to amend the report by confirming designation of the mayor, by the mayor of the chair and vice chair of the Police Conduct Oversight Commission. And, you know, if you look at the amendments, it's just two names that are designated as the chair and vice chair. The first name is Andrea Brown as the chair, and Jennifer Singleton as a vice chair. And this was an oversight, I would imagine, on the part of staff. And I wanted to thank the person that pointed this out. You know, I get plenty of emails from Chuck Turcik, and Chuck Turcik was actually the person that pointed out this error. And he let us know that under our ordinances, the mayor is supposed to designate a chair and a vice chair. And so this is what we're doing. We're correcting this error. But, yeah, really, just want to give a shout out to Chuck Turcik for pointing that out for us. And so that's really all it is. It's just to conform with the ordinance.
Councilmember Yang has moved the amended item number one on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on item one.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards twelve items today for consideration. Item one is the Sixth Avenue Street paving project from Fifth Street North to Washington Avenue North. And that's a project designation and setting public hearing. And that public hearing is set for February 2nd, 2016. Item two is the Twenty-Sixth Avenue North Street Reconstruction Project from West Broadway to Lyndale. And that's to designate that project and set that public hearing also for February 2nd, 2016. Item three is the Fifty-Fourth Street West Reconstruction Project from Penn Avenue South, Lyndale Avenue South. And that's to set that project parameters and a public hearing for February 2nd, 2016. Item four is the Excel Energy Lighting Emitting Diode Rate Tariff. Now, for instance, middle of the comments of the Public Utilities Commission regarding the Excel Energy LED Rate Tariff. Item five is the City Hosted Open Streets Minneapolis Language for Policy Around That. All items referred to Ways and Means Committee. Item six is the Capital Project Closeouts Passage Resolution, Accepting the Final Cost Projects, and Making Adjustments Accordingly. Item seven is the Transportation Alternatives Program Safe Routes to School Grant Application. And that's an application for the 2017 federal program of that name. Item eight is the Eleventh Avenue South Bridge Contract Amendment. And that's authorizing a contract to adjust that by $2,778.88 to complete that project at Eleventh Avenue South. Item nine is the Rehabilitation of Sanitary Manhole Contract Amendment. That suggests that to include that project after the dollar amount stated. Item ten is the Eighth Street South Street Reconstruction. And that's Hennepin Avenue to Chicago Avenue. And that's a request for proposals for engineering and design services for that project. Item eleven is the bid for Skyway Boiler Replacement. And that's accepting the low bid for that project in the amount of $89,950. And the final item is a bid for a little snow and ice in public sidewalks. And that's accepting the low response of bid of selling reconstruction for the amount of $487,500 to provide those services. Madam President, I move all items as stated.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That report is adopted. I just need to confer with the Vice President. Here, a minute. I'm going to turn the chair over to the Council Vice President.
Thank you, colleagues. Just a moment. Okay, I believe we're ready for the Ways and Means Report. All right. So I will call on Councilmember Quincy, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, to give that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ways and Means brings forward twenty-six items for your consideration this morning. The first two are workers' compensation claims. There's a settlement of property damage of a subrogation lawsuit, a legal settlement of a subrogation claim by Western National Insurance Company, a funding designation correction to a resolution 2015 R-13, and a filing of a lawsuit over a purchase price for liquid ammonium sulfate. Item number seven is, and a number of items from our Finance Property Services Department, is a contract amendment with the Center for Energy and Environment, a contract amendment for cable equipment running from 331 Second Avenue to 330 Second Avenue, a property redevelopment in the vicinity of 340 Twenty-seventh Avenue Northeast for municipal operations. Item number ten is the annual property insurance premium for the convention center. Item number eleven is the state and federal grants for youth violence prevention services, authoring agreements with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs to receive state and federal funding. Item number twelve is a contract amendment with E. Bailey for LLP for a filing of an IRS return as required by the Affordable Care Act. Item thirteen is the contract amendment with Zenger-Folkman to provide online multi-rater assessment, feedback, and coaching as part of the city's leadership development training program. Item number fourteen is a contract with the University of Minnesota College of Continuing Education to deliver supervisory training for the city of Minneapolis employees. Item number seventeen is a non-disclosure agreement with an IT gift acceptance for One-Nek Annual Sales Conference Participation. That's item sixteen. These are a series of contracts related to Information Technology Department. I just wanted to alert those to you. Item number seventeen is an IT revenue contract for computer-aided dispatch services. There's a contract amendment for iLinks for continued comment support, contract amendment with Sierra Cedar for ongoing comment services, a contract amendment with Iceberg Technology Group for ongoing comment support, contract amendment with Global Source IT for ongoing comment services, and a wireless Minneapolis community benefits account for Pimsleur Dance and Theater. Items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are brought from us from the executive committee. These are related to appointed position for the Assistant City Coordinator of Finance, also known as our Chief Financial Officer, an appointed position of Supervising Attorney from the Criminal Division, an appointed position of Managing Attorney from the Civil Division, and the final item is a collective bargaining agreement with Minneapolis City Supervisors Association. Happy to answer any questions on those twenty-six items, but we'll move all twenty-six items for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Quincy has moved all twenty-six items on the Ways and Means Agenda. In your discussion, anyone would like to pull something off? Not seeing anything, so the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
All right, all those items are approved. Next, we have our Zoning and Planning Committee with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items from the Zoning and Planning Committee. Item number one is denying an appeal for expansion of nonconforming use for 912 East to Twenty-Fourth Street. Item number two is passage of an ordinance updating our zoning code to allow for small-scale grain milling. Item number three is passage of an ordinance updating our zoning code related to the size of commercial uses. Item number four is passage of an ordinance updating our zoning code to allow for homeless shelters and overnight emergency shelters in a couple more zoning districts. And I understand Councilmember Reich has an amendment which is in front of us. I will move all four items.
Okay. Councilmember Bender has moved all four items. I'm assuming Councilmember Reich is on cue for his amendment on item number four. So I think I'm going to ask for the vote on items one through three, and then we can consider item number four. All right, anything else? I'm not seeing, so the clerk will call the roll on items one through three.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden. Yang, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
So, on item number four, I just want to note Councilmember Bender did move the underlying item, and I'm going to recognize Councilmember Reich for his desired amendment.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The amendment before you simply pauses for a duration of time as measured by the comprehensive plan process, which is now underway, to take out the ILOD, the Industrial Overlay District, from consideration. As we know, all other industrial designations are not included in this expansion of availability for this use. And given that the old industrial overlay district has a presumption of transition that I don't think is current or desired from my perspective anyways, and given subsequent studies have shown that our industrial properties are somewhat of an endangered species, that it's appropriate to look at these sort of transitional areas, as they're currently called, through the comp plan and thereby designating their appropriateness or not for this type of use. So that's the motion before us, or the amendment before us.
So Councilmember Reich has moved his amendment and spoke to it. Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, and I'm willing to offer a second so that we can discuss that.
And I apologize, is there a second on it?
Yep. And so this is a change from the original proposal, and we were hoping that where we were allowing people to live and put in residential properties would also be open to shelters. And that was the intention of it, and so in the industrial overlay districts, they can. But I also recognize the concerns that some of these industrial overlay districts that had never actually had housing put in them might be more appropriately rezoned back to industrial, and that we're going through a comp plan process where that could occur. And so working with Councilmember Reich, this seemed like a way to approach that and just make sure that we didn't add some other pressure that would somehow change that during this comp plan drafting. And so I'm comfortable with this amendment, and I'll support it with a little bit of reluctance.
Okay. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the compromise of framing this as reading through the comprehensive plan process. This is a significant change to the proposal. It takes out about 25% of the total land area where we're expanding to allow for shelters. And my main concern with that is that many of my own constituents, as well as others who participated in the outreach process around this, really voiced concern about concentration of this use. And so, you know, this is removing some of the land area that's in, you know, in wards or parts of the city that are farther out from the core. So that is a pretty significant change. I am very sympathetic to Councilmember Reich's commitment and share it to ensuring that our industrial lands are protected and that we have space for industrial jobs in our city. So, you know, I'm frankly a bit torn about this. I'll likely vote no on the amendment, but I do really appreciate this, framing it as part of the conversation about industrial land. And I understand the underlying goal of that. I do think, you know, we are still allowing folks to live in industrial living overlay districts. Now we would just be saying not homeless shelters. So I hope we can have a great conversation on industrial land through the comp plan process as well.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any other discussion on this item. So on Councilmember Reich's amendment, all approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And so now that amendment is approved. So now on item number four, as amended, Councilmember Gordon.
Well, I just wanted to notice the significance of this, and I also think the significance to the fact that we're probably going to get a unanimous approval for expanding this opportunity for overnight and emergency shelters. For those of us who's been on the council a long time, this is an issue that would come up every so often. I think particularly it came up when we started seeing the need growing for homeless shelters. We definitely had our Heading Home Hennepin Plan, and we're still, housing first, and permanent housing and long-term housing is definitely a big priority. But we have had an issue with how we deal with more of the critical and the crisis and acute homelessness, which can be a real key, the way we deal with that, to getting people into that permanent housing. And for a long time on this council, we couldn't seem to see a path forward for how we could do that, and we were locked into kind of having it set. I forget exactly the year when we decided it had to be an accessory use to a place of religious assembly, but that seemed to be the only way that we could do it. And there was also difficulty every time that it came up, and we wanted to expand that. And now I think, and it did, I'll admit, it took us well over a year to figure out this pathway forward, and it was fairly complicated, and there were some adjustments along the way. We ended up creating this smaller shelter concept where there can be a longer stay called emergency shelters. And I just want to remind folks that we're also working with the Health Department, who does our licensing of motels and lodging, because there's going to be a companion ordinance that's coming early next year. So there'll actually be a license on these. So far, the way I'm thinking of it on the emergency shelters and not the overnight shelters, and it'll be just making sure it meets some basic standards. So there'll be that discussion too. As optimistic and excited as I am about it, although I think we also want to be clear that we actually don't know that this is going to result in more beds being provided for shelters. I hope that it is. I hope there's some people out there and providers and organizations that will use this opportunity to come up with some really fantastic ways to address this need. But at least we're not going to stand in their way as much as we have been in the past. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to just add my thanks to everyone who's participated in this discussion. It's a very sensitive subject in our neighborhoods, and we had a lot of people come out and have really great discussions about how we can provide for more space for people who are experiencing homelessness in our city. I don't think that this will be a huge change. The resources in our shelter system are very strapped, and I've gotten to know some of the folks who are providing services to our homeless residents in our city, and their passion is really what I think carries forward in such limited resources, these services. One of the things that I saw happen during the year that we've been working on this process was some really great awareness about the lives of people who are experiencing homelessness in our city. And we had a meeting up in the Jordan neighborhood where someone from that neighborhood organization shared the experience of opening a shelter there. And she talked about how the neighborhood organization arranged for a tour of the shelter for neighbors who live very nearby. They were concerned initially about the impacts on their homes and in their neighborhood, and they left the tour more concerned about the people who were living in the shelter and wanting to understand what the facility would be like, if there was a way to provide for beds instead of mats, and just really leaving with a concern about the individuals that the shelter was going to serve much more than the impacts on the neighborhood. And many of my own constituents in Woodya, where we do have two shelters now, you know, there are ongoing conversations and concerns about the shelters, but I think mostly I have heard from people who get involved and who volunteer in the shelters and who have a good experience with that. So this is a pretty small incremental change. We have added only a real small amount of land area in the city for shelters, but it is a significant change. And I know folks, there were folks who didn't really want to work on this at all, but I'm really thankful that people kept an open mind and that we were able to find a good compromise and a good incremental step forward on this issue.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Well, thankfully, we're not in a situation where we have to be convincing each other of the right thing to do here. So I think it's just potentially giving some perspective. And unfortunately, I think this is a good change, but I don't think it's going to have a great effect. And the reason for that is because the biggest barrier right now to homeless shelters is money, is the cost of providing the services and the fact that it's incumbent upon the shelter operators who are, you know, just unbelievably passionate to try to raise private money and scrape together public money in order to operate a shelter. We have an emergency shelter in my ward at First Covenant Church, and I have a mass majority of the shelters actually in my ward, and I really have not had an experience where they've been problems. Unfortunately, the concentration and isolation of these shelters is the biggest problem. And if they were more integrated into the community, it would be better. In addition to that, I just want to note, these are people that are living in the community anyway. So many times, they're living under a highway overpass, and then they're at risk of the police coming and clearing them out and their belongings being taken away, or they're living in a park. So it's better, in my opinion, to find a safe shelter for people to stay in than to ignore the issue. And so I'm hoping that in the scheme of things, they'll be funding to be able to open some of these smaller shelters rather than the very large emergency shelters that we have in my ward, for example, at Ten-Ten Curry. Because I think that once folks are more integrated into the community, they can move forward and try to move their lives forward. And rather than being institutionalized in a big building on the edge of town where they feel at risk themselves. So I do think the zoning piece is a piece of it, but the bigger piece of it is how we fund these services going forward, and we always need to keep our eye on that.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I am very supportive of this motion. Thank you to those who did a lot of work on it over the last half year or so. And I also wanted to acknowledge another major problem, which is very low-income housing. I took a tour of several of the homeless shelters last year, and one of the things that perhaps naively surprised me was the very large percentage of those who are in homeless shelters who are working on a very regular basis, part-time and in some cases full-time jobs. But the gap, the significant gap between the cost at a homeless shelter, which is fairly low, and the cost of obtaining full-time housing at the 50% of median income level, which is what we normally build, is still gigantic and insurmountable in some cases and results in people, essentially a stagnation and inability to rise up. And so that's a major problem. And also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association, who about five months ago or so, three months ago, did a really awesome thing. They put about half a million dollars into support for those who are homeless on the streets, helping them, you know, using, helping them become more involved with the neighborhood, giving them supportive services, from everything from cultural services to helping them find shelter itself. So I just really wanted to thank them.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I just wanted to add some thanks too for getting to this point. I think that we never would have gotten here if it hadn't been for some outstanding staff support from planning. And Shanna Sether from the planning department did amazing research, amazing maps, and would redo the maps, and would look at other things and compare other variables and prepare presentations for us, and that was really significant. I really appreciated all the support from Councilmember Bender's office also. But we also had a steering committee of shelter providers and other interested people to work on it, and that was significant. And one of the things I actually heard early on was that one of the problems with the overnight shelters is people come, spend the night, they leave. There's no relationship that they can really be built with the providers, and there's no opportunities for them to bring them any more kind of supportive services or try to get a little bit more at the problem. And while there isn't money yet, I am excited by the idea of the smaller emergency shelters that allow people to stay up to 30 days, because I think that will really give us an opportunity not only to create more humane shelters throughout the city, but also to have people able to get their footing, figure out where to go next, and get some assistance figuring out what are the steps they need to get into that permanent housing. And lastly, I just want to thank the, I guess, the residents of Minneapolis. I have to tell you that I imagined if we did this, and when we had the public hearing, people would be showing up in droves with kind of the not in my neighborhood, we can't do this, this is going to be so terrible and so horrible. And there were actually a couple times when neighborhood organizations heard about this, got some information, maybe some confusing information, and they were neighborhoods that weren't in my ward, but I was willing to go out there with a presentation, and I thought, oh, what's going to happen when I go out here and present to this neighborhood? And, okay, here I go. And I went and I presented, and there was discussions. And by and large, the neighborhood board said, yeah, we need to do something about this. This kind of solution is much better than with people being on the street or struggling in their cars or at friends' houses. And really, it wasn't just the council that seemed ready for this now, or it might not have been 12 years ago, but it seems like the residents of Minneapolis are, and I think that says a lot about our city. And hopefully, because I think Councilmember Goodman raises a good point, there is some funding for this. We're not even able to do this as a city, but hopefully others will step forward and we'll see some really creative and interesting ideas, and we can maybe even end up with some kind of niche solutions where there's a real gap now, like I think there is in the Cedar Riverside area, for example. We've had people asking, how could we get a youth shelter there? What are ways to do that? And there's a lot of people right now that don't feel comfortable going to the big shelters the way they are. There's different cultural groups, there's gender differences, and so this could give us an opportunity to really help meet that need. And what we think, and these are probably underestimates, but what we've heard is there's about 200 people who don't have a place to stay and are living in homelessness in the There's different cultural groups, there's gender differences. And so this could give us an opportunity to really help meet that need. And what we think, and these are probably underestimates, but what we've heard is there's about 200 people who don't have a place to stay and are living in homelessness in the city. That's only 200 people. That's not an enormous number. And maybe it's really double or triple because of couch surfing and other things. But that's something that we could solve, and we could have nobody having to sleep outside in the city, and then we can go on and tackle the bigger problems. So let's do it.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I wanted to speak in support of this. And, you know, just fairly quickly, this is just, you know, a really good step forward for the City of Minneapolis in terms of being a much more gentler, kinder, more compassionate city government in terms of allowing for more places for this. And, you know, I know that in some parts of the community, people talk about this issue of over-concentration. And, you know, I think sometimes, you know, we have to balance that against just doing good for people. And, you know, I think in this situation, we should be very mindful of the concentration issue. But overriding this, I think, is just compassion and thoughtfulness to the people who live in the City of Minneapolis, even folks who are homeless. And so I think this is a wonderful step forward, and I am fully in support of this.
All right. And thank you very much. Seeing no further comment, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Vice President Glidden.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
All right. Next, we have our introduction and referral calendar. And we have one notice of an ordinance regarding the car sharing program. Pursuant to notice, this is a motion by Reich to introduce the subject matter of the following ordinances, amending the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances for First Reading and Referral to the Community Development and Regulatory Services and Transportation and Public Works Committees. And I think this should be A, Title 13, Chapter 259, relating to licenses and business regulations in general, adding car-share operators to the list of staff-approved business licenses. And B, Title 18, Chapter 478, relating to traffic code, parking, stopping, and standing, adding a new Title 11, authorizing the Public Works Director to regulate car-share operators doing business in the city. And as that's a notice, we don't need to vote on that. Next, we have several honorary resolutions. And I think we can vote on these all as a bunch, or, okay, so I'll just read through all of them first. Resolution number one is a Community Health Charities Day honorary resolution. This is passage of a resolution recognizing January 14th, 2016, as Community Health Charities Day in the City of Minneapolis. Item number two is a passage of a resolution recognizing February 15th, 2016, as International Angelman Day. Item number three is a passage of a resolution honoring International Human Rights Day. Item number four is passage of a resolution supporting cities for the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, or CDAW, initiative in support of the principles of the UN Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women at the Local Level. Item number five is passage of a resolution honoring the 2015 Minneapolis North High Polers Football Team. And item number six is passage of a resolution honoring the 90th anniversary of the Twin Cities 40 Club. And I would take